And then Juliana, who took part in our SLC call last week as a guest and was really valuable. She is unable to take part in tonight's call, but Melissa, she did say if there's anything we want her to review. In the meantime, she's happy to provide any insights or guidance or any of that stuff. So spoke with her and then, as I think you all know, Madonna is going to be stepping down from the board. She's in Japan now, but she mentioned this to me just before our July meeting. And so I think I brought that to you all, but officially she'll come off the board after tonight. And so we wish her well. She's been good to our school for a great many years, even before she was a board member. And she's kind of involved in a whole host of things at the district level right now. And so I think time is scarce. So she's going to come off, but I think she'll be no stranger to the school as we need support, particularly with kind of math pedagogy and curriculum. So we wish her well. So with the mission moment tonight, we have a special guest who's going to provide a special update. You all can see my screen and it looks like a PowerPoint, correct?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. And so let's see here. Naseebah Hack is here and Naseebah, welcome. Nice to see you again today. She is our manager of alumni success at our school. She has the privilege of working with, I want to say it's around 250 of our graduates, our first four cohorts as of now. And so it's a busy time for her. She sort of supports our, our kids in their onboarding to college, which is happening right now. Trudy's son, Aday, left for college yesterday and is now on campus. So this is the time of year. And with it, I think as you all may know, would well know, we, we, we serve and are proud to serve a vast majority of our students who graduate and then our first generation college students. And so the support provided to them, I think is really important as you think about perhaps your own experiences with college, either for yourself or with others and how foreign that can feel. And so she does a terrific job in doing that. We've shared stats from time to time. They're early stats and we're kind of growing and getting better each year. We'll have some more to share out, but Naseebah is here and she's going to provide a quick update on, on a milestone. So Naseebah, welcome. You've got a very vested group of board members here. You met Trudy today and I think you've met her before in your role. Jim Ellsworth is our board chair. And so Jim is here. Mario Laddier is our treasurer and has been in the board since we opened the school. Sal is also here. He's been involved in the school forever and been very active in a number of capacities and he's been on the board for a number of years since. And Jeanette, who may be joining us soon, is also a longtime board member and has served in a consulting role in helping us with all things legal and compliance. That's her field of expertise. So done the intros, I've mentioned a lot. Naseebah, let me turn over to you.
Yeah. Hey, everyone. It's great to be here to share this amazing mission moment with you all. So Sebastian Lobos is in the pictures. He is a member of our first graduating class in 2020. And he is also the first in our entire body of alumni to earn his bachelor's degree. And so that is pictured here. A little bit about Sebastian. So he graduated from high school with a 4.1. He took tons of AP courses. And all of that hard work and prep at Unity really enabled him to earn his bachelor's in three years after graduating from Unity. We are so, so incredibly proud of him. And this morning, he actually was able to join us. I invited him to a Google meet where he videoed into the middle school auditorium. And we really had this like full circle moment where he saw where he was, where he used to be and he saw all of our staff. And really just was an inspiration to all of us to continue this work and to, to do what we do. And so Sebastian's journey was really, really incredible. He started off at the University of Miami. Then he transferred in 2022 to Florida International University and he got his degree in computer science. Sebastian is super passionate about technology and really aware that it's an evolving field. That's also lucrative and he sees it as a field where he can constantly learn because he's someone who's eager to continuously learn and be, be a part of this growing digital era that we're in. And so right now, currently in my work, I'm helping him build up his resume and apply for an interview for positions in the computer science field. And it's really exciting to, to be supporting our first student with a bachelor's.
Thanks for sharing that. Yeah, it was really cool. At, at nine fifteen and like the, the, the screen that he could see was just about a hundred staff sitting in an auditorium, giving him a standing ovation. So imagine, imagine waking up to that. And he had some really nice and thoughtful words for, for us as a team and in school. So it was a nice event. Trudy, it was cool. To have him there and it was a touching moment and it fired us up. So it kind of kicked things off in the right way. It was a mission moment for our team this morning on day one.
Absolutely. And Sebastian is an absolute, absolute pleasure to work with and support. I never got to be with him in the school physically because I started working in 21, but he, you know, welcomed me and was super personable and just, we've developed a close bond, even though he's in Florida. So yeah, he's just, he's a great, great young man.
Cool. So more of this to come as we, as we welcome in our founding class to their fourth year of college. And Naseebah, thank you for your good work and look forward to more updates on, on this important front. In alignment with them, our mission and kids leading fulfilling lives. So thank you. And thanks for tuning in on Tuesday evening.
Yep. Take care, everyone.
Bye bye.
Take care. Bye bye.
All right. So that's the mission moment tonight. And I guess a couple of other just logistical or orientations or tidbits. As I mentioned in my email, we've got one deck tonight. The agenda is sort of here. You've got a hard copy of your agenda in your inbox. You've got a playbook, which we'll talk about this meeting in your inbox. If you want to open that up, there's also images of that here in this deck. But I think this is just a streamlined way of, of working through the nuts and bolts and important areas of school during a monthly meeting. So always open to kind of feedback. If you think there are better ways of kind of conveying information and doing so in the easiest way possible, but we'll give this a whirl today. And so the agenda itself should be familiar, some of the same kind of items throughout. And I think with that, Jim, shall we begin?
Yeah, yeah. I like the format. I like having it all in one place.
I've got to move from one document.
And do so. This is good.
So here we are. So we talked about Sebastian. I'll just say his dad has been a fixture forever. I've known his dad since day one, was always showing up, always there. He has not aged a bit there, although Sebastian definitely has. So we'll start with current headlines. We'll move the dashboard and I'm doing that just so you have a sense of all right, the scene, the setting and where things are as we move into August and the first day of school in just a couple of weeks. So with the first three headlines, I've offered some information about summer academy, summer enrichment and summer PD. It was an active summer in a number of ways. Just going to give this to you as an FYI and not kind of go through anything specific. I don't think it requires any sort of deep dive among team. So this is here. We had a fairly productive summer with our programming. I think you saw this last month, but I bring it back up because I think it's important as we, as we look to the coming weeks and our moves to improve retention from eighth grade at Unity to the ninth grade. So more of our eighth graders coming to our high school. And I think right now the projection is 50%, which is certainly north of where we were this past year at 30%. So good gains there. We'd like to see something closer to 80% for the coming year. And I've noted some of the things that I think we did this year that we're going to continue to leverage to see that number continue to rise. So that the good work we put in, in middle school is something we're building on as kids enter ninth grade. So that's a retention update. The graduating class of 2024, here's some additional updates from the last month. We did have some kids attend summer school and worked toward earning perhaps that last credit needed for graduation for 2024. And so this incorporates any August diplomas being distributed, earned. And so our goal has been 93%. We've been there over the past three cohorts that we graduated. This year, we, we did meet some challenges. We talked about those challenges last month in detail. We are looking at an unofficial rate of 85% for this year, which is in line with the state level across the board. Back in June, we were looking at 81% with some moves to make to get something closer to 85 or 87%. So you get a sense of kind of where our students who didn't earn a diploma are. We went into depth about that last month too. So nothing's changed. I think we had one student that ended up earning their diploma over the summer. And so that's incorporated here, but that's where things stand. The other update I'll provide is just, we do have some unofficial data with our students with IEPs and that graduation rate. So of our 11 students with IEPs in the class of 2024, eight graduated. And so we're looking at a graduation rate in the low to mid seventies, which is lower than what we've had in the past, but it's higher than what the state average has been. Typically, the state average has been in the mid sixties. So are there any questions about this update and kind of where things stand with the class 2024? All right. Next headline, headline six. So just some updates with the class of 2024 and what happens after high school graduation. And so just some stats for you. Naseebah and I dig into these stats often. We had 53 students in this class of 2024. Of that 53, 85% earned a diploma in four years. There's a typo there. It should say 85, not 87. And then of that, all of the students that applied to college who graduated and all of the students who graduated and applied to college then were accepted into at least one, two-year or four-year college. So that's strong. The next kind of level of work is in having kids, once they're, once they're accepted, matriculate. And so there's typically a slide from acceptances to matriculation. Our job is to help close that. So that if kids have plans, let's make sure that there's no obstacles in the way from them matriculating to college. And so that's a part of Naseebah's role at the school. We've been in the low seventies, 70 to 72% the last few years and have made some gains this year to 74%. Our goal is really 80% is there's going to be some attrition, some change, but we'd like to minimize that. So we've made some progress toward that goal. And so that's where things stand at this point with this class. And so are there any questions about the class 2024 and where things stand is they? Oh gosh. Yeah. I'm, I'm thinking ahead to the class 2024.
But that was not my question. It seems that if 87% of the graduates applied to college and 87% were accepted, oh, hold on. So everybody who applied was accepted or?
Everyone who graduated, applied, everyone.
Was accepted. Okay. So everybody, okay. So it's just a matter of the yield of like, you've got like 12, 10, 12% who get accepted, but don't have all, okay. All right. I wasn't sure I was following the numbers.
Yep. Yep. Cool. No, thank you for the clarifying question. So next headline relates to, to hiring and staffing. And so updates, and I shared this out with the SLC on last Wednesday. And there have been some updates since then, some movements, some hiring, perhaps resignation. And so right now we've got an ELA teacher at the middle school and a humanities specialist at the middle school. Those are the positions that I think are most important for us, that we have close eyes on in bringing in talented folks. And so there's some pressure to do that this time of the year. There are a couple of positions that we're kind of holding on, including a reading interventionist and just, I want to have a better sense of enrollment and health before moving into that. And then we've got an operations coordinator that we've, we've identified and will likely make an offer to tomorrow. On the high school end of things, there's also an ELA teacher position open that recently opened. And so same moves there in hiring someone. We've got one person that we interviewed a week ago who might bring back in. There is a STEM learning specialist position that also teaches computer science open at this point in time. That was also a sort of a recent update. And then we've got an academic counseling position within that team who also teaches college and career readiness. We're holding on one position right now, again, just to get a better sense of enrollment, but that position is a part-time humanities learning specialist position. So that's the scene. This is one of the stressful parts of the, the work as we've talked about in the past, but is, is often the case each year.
Yeah. Josh, on, on the recently open stuff, is there anything we can do? So people are incentivized to give notice earlier if they're going to leave?
Yep. I've got one idea and I think it probably makes sense to discuss it during the tail end of this meeting.
Okay.
So I think I'll just note that now so we come back to it. But I think the topic here is just late resignations and obviously they have an adverse impact on team and programming. So what are some ways in which we can systematically perhaps prevent that from happening? Other insights here, considerations? I think that's one of the right ones. Okay, cool. And then I'll, I'll give a, a brief update on enrollment as we know it now. August, moving into September. Again, this has switched up a little bit since I think Jeanette, we spoke last week. And so we're looking at unlikely enrollment right now. The latest numbers are 556. This is versus our target of 571. That's the max that we could serve at the school based on our staffing. And that compares to kind of a target in September of 554 over the year. So I think, you know, we're, we're, we're in a fairly good place right now while also being cautiously optimistic. As you all know, we budgeted at 533. So the idea is to see these numbers through and be serving proudly 556 kids come the first day of school through September. Item nine offers just a breakdown of what that enrollment looks like. So you see, we're kind of lighter than we were last year in sixth grade. And so that's where the emphasis has been, but we're quite heavy in seventh and eighth grade. Sixth grade is in line with our classes in 10th and 11th and 12th grade. But we would like to see if we were to sort of have our choice in bringing kids into our school. We prefer to work with them for a longer period of time. And so I think there's been a focus on trying to get the 66 up closer to something in the mid seventies or beyond. So that's where things stand now. Nine, 12, we're looking at unlikely enrollment of 278 versus 285, which is our max enrollment there. And I've kind of talked about 612 already. As you well know, rental reimbursement is set at 275 under our budget. So we're at 278 now. So we're north of that. It's about maintaining that and seeing that through. And I think those are some of the big enrollment headlines forecasting wise. Are there any questions or insights that are worth discussing? Okay. And then final update, and I may have mentioned this back in July, but we did receive a grant with the Two Trees Organization or Walentus Foundation in downtown Brooklyn for 25 grand. We did that partnership with PS44. And we're going to be making some upgrades to our stage in our auditorium at the middle school. So those are the updates for this meeting. That's where we are on August 22nd, 2023. What I want to do now is move us to the next agenda item. And that's a review of our governance data dashboard. And I'm going to do it slightly differently and I think in a more streamlined fashion. We're still going to look at the year and data from 22, 23, because we're just moving into 23, 24 and don't really have a lot of data to, to analyze. But what I want to do is I just want to give you a summary of kind of where things stand from the balcony. And then we can dig in the areas that the team feels is perhaps most important to dig into. And so our questions can come my way. Ideas can come our way, et cetera. So this is a little small. If it's too small, let me know. Let me orientate at this before we kind of dig into it. So this is a summary of the 13 different dashboards, around 13, that we have within the other file that I often bring to you. And so you see those listed as areas within the school. At the top is student enrollment and you're imagining that table that we often look at. I've given you some snapshots of that data already, so we won't be looking at that today. And you can take 10 seconds now to look at the other areas of schools. So you have a sense of what we typically see, typically see and how it's provided and organized here. The targets we discuss often, I have offered just some notes on what our targets are for each of these areas, but in an abbreviated form. So if something's unclear here, happy to clarify or offer some guidance on what those numbers mean. But with student enrollment, for example, our target, this past year was 546. Our budget enrollment was 519. And so that's how, that's read. And then the third column or fourth column here technically is status. And that offers a sense of kind of where we are as we look to close out the year. Where there are three categories, actually four. There's pending, which is like, we're still kind of looking at things and, and, and closing out the year and the data we have. Met means we met the targets fully. Partially met means we were within range, within, you know, a few points or very close where that seemed to be a good qualification. And or it means that we, if there were two targets, we met one and perhaps not the other. And then not met means we did not meet the, the target or targets that were established at the beginning of the year for those areas. So that's our, also color coded. Obviously in red, yellow and green. I'm sorry?
What's the pending stuff?
So pending stuff, finance would be like the closeout of the 22, 23 school year and those metrics. Student recruitment is really, we can look at that in two ways. So with student recruitment, we can look at it based on our lottery day and where things are there, or we can look at it in terms of what is the result as a enrollment measure going into September. And so there, we technically did not meet our targets for a number of applications coming in during the lottery. But we seem to be informed with regard to recruitment yielding an enrollment that is desirable as we move into September. So that's how I'm interpreting this and then providing it back to team so that it has some value. And then retention, I want to look at that, that in a couple of ways. So if you remember back in May, June, we were in line to reach our goal of having 80% of the staff who we offered an agreement, renewal agreement to returning. And I think so that, that's good. That's what we were aiming for. And that's often the time period that we've looked at that data. And I just, I think I want to do a deeper dive on that, given that we did have a couple of resignations this summer, perhaps a handful. I want to reexamine that and perhaps incorporate the summer attrition into our measures here so as to just have a better read as to our exposure to turnover. So that's why that's pending.
Okay. On either enrollment or recruitment, could we try to account for sort of how to explain it, that they try to have the right class size in every class, like could that sort of be tracked somehow where we don't have like a shortage in one, in one and an overage in another and whatever. Cause I think, I mean, it's fine, right? When you say 533 or five, whatever. I think 533 is a better number if it's sort of spread more evenly than it is if it's like ups and downs. And I think I, I don't know that it would cause you to meet or not meet, but I think it'd be useful to keep track of that too.
Table one of the dashboard does break it down by grade and by site. And so it offers that. It's not here tonight, but we typically have looked at that way, in that way. And that's where we've often flagged, you know, ninth grade enrollment versus 10th and 11th or sixth versus seventh and eighth. If you remember last year, we had a smaller eighth grade class.
Right.
To the point of us then changing up our staffing to best accommodate that lower number. And so, yeah, we can, we can, as we think about how to review this moving forward, we can look at that data at any point in time.
Right. I guess I, I think, you know, if you've got a sort of too small class, it just carries over for a bunch of years and it's just harder to fix, right? Because as, as you, as you move along, you're sort of resigned to just carrying a small class and making it up in future years. And then you're enrolled in those classes and then you've got to have another small one at some point. And it sort of seems like it's, it's a bit of a cycle.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I think that's true. And it, it at the middle school, we have more space and it's kind of a cleaner, more simpler model. We have four cohorts and we can serve as many as a hundred kids per grade. And so there's less sort of stress at the high school where there's that cap of 285. It gets, it's trickier to kind of negotiate. So those are just kind of like the, the, the factors involved.
Fully understood, but I think in terms of allocation of resources, if we always find that when we have a smaller cohort, it's very often in sixth and ninth, I think we need to double down on those grades, right? And just, it just means that either there's something we can't fix or we just need to throw more resources at it.
Yep. So we've talked about kind of pending.
Student attendance. So I can't remember where I read it. There was something I read the other day where a lot of schools are facing that after COVID. Kids get used to staying home. And schools are saying, if you don't meet the 90% threshold, you know, you're expelled, you're out. Are there any consequences at Unity for a child not coming to school?
At this point in time, I, I just would say we follow all the guidelines that we, we are supposed to within SED. And so that's one. And then secondly, we have and have for the past couple of years. So I think, you know, we're, we're, it's a, it's a good timely question, Jim, and that we're asking the same questions internally right now. Because we're coming out of what was some hard times where we, we tended to kind of like back off a little bit because of unknowns with health, et cetera. But that time seems to be done. And so we moved back into school as it was. And so that does require us also helping to, to kind of adjust the mindset around the importance of school and the importance of being in school every day. So I'll also say that we're exploring ways in which we, as reasonably sound as possible, communicate that to families and have systems in play that, that does require attendance, because it, it, it right now does impact outcomes and did this year.
Totally.
Legion's results.
Yeah. And not just for the, the student who's not attending, but it sends a signal throughout, you know, that eh, you know, nothing happens, you know, show up, right?
And you have, you know, 10 kids out of your 20 in class on a given day, you make adjustments and it's really hard to then kind of teach. Essentially get a couple of classes going on within your one class of where kids are. So it can be very hard.
Cause this is not, this is not normal. Like if you, if you, you know, hit the reverse button and went back five years, this is not normal. This is something.
We, we from our first year to 2019 experienced attendance of 92 and 93%. So we're talking about, you know, maybe an additional 30 kids out on a given day.
Yeah. So this is not normal. Something needs to be done here. Again, I don't know, you know, I, I can get something I read where this is really a problem across the board. It's not just you. And they've said, if you're not at 90%, you're out because you're not part of the community and whatever. I don't know what the whole rationale was. I'm not suggesting that's the path, but a lot of people are seeing it and I think it does have an impact on, you know, on the other kids in terms of just saying, yeah, this is kind of optional.
Yeah. I think, I think what you're, what you're suggesting here is let's, let's revisit the policies you have in play and alignment to SED policies. And if there are ways in which we can strengthen them to incentivize and require stronger attendance, we should, we should certainly.
What does the SED say if the kid's not going to school six, if they're 40% attended, you know, 60% attendance, 40%? What does the SED say to do in that situation?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that, you know, I, I think it's possible different folks that would say different things, unfortunately. But Melissa, I don't know if you have a sense of like what, what the policy kind of states now, based on your work with Grace recently, where we've had some conversations about this. Would you?
Yeah. As far as the SED, I think the SED is, is fairly silent on this. We follow for most things, New York City's policies when we do not have a policy. So we'll look to them for what similar policies exist and tailor our language from there. So a credit recovery program is a, a great example. We've taken wisdom from there as well as pulling from other charter schools. We do know that other charters have great attendance minimums. We do know that other charters have great attendance minimums for credit, and we are exploring attendance minimums for credit. Now, this would still be. Accepting of real circumstances and would delineate between an excused absence from a doctor. Or even a parental excused absence to a degree. And then a kid not showing up. So it's something like, I I don't have it in front of me, but I think we said like seventy percent or something. It's still. Pretty low and we're looking, it wouldn't be an expulsion, it would be the child would need to retake that class. Because we do have students who might be in school daily, but not in their first two periods ever. And we really want to dissuade. Students from those behaviors as well. So it is something we are exploring. Um, for policy for this year.
Yeah, I mean, the good thing about being a charter is we're not beholden to the SED policy or the. Say we can just do what's right, right? I don't know what the answer is, you guys are.
We are, we are, I mean, if the if a policy.
If the SED has no policy, if the SED has no policy, then guess what? We get to make her up, right?
Yeah.
So. And it just seems like. And I get, I mean, it's a case, it's very much a case by case thing, no question about it. And you got to be. Very mindful of that, but. Just statistically speaking, this is not from what we've experienced before COVID. And so something else is going on. It's not that everybody's sick of being. Yeah, medical excuses, all that stuff. Anyway.
Yeah.
But yeah, I just read something, a lot of, we're not alone, a lot of people are saying the same thing.
I think the the combination of perhaps. Like a ten, like a sort of sickness or illness concerns coupled with. Kind of mental health, kind of crises and issues going on has then, I think, resulted in kids opting out of school on a given day more often than they would otherwise. And so here we are. And so. We got a.
Well, and they're used to not going to school during COVID and they kind of like that. I mean, who wouldn't? So, you know, there's a lot of that, too. Who knows?
Yeah. So I'm going to say a bit more about. A grant later on in our meeting coming out of the the DFC debrief, but. So we've talked about enrollment and done a deep dive there. We've talked about attendance. The other one here that that really is troublesome for me is the the out of school suspension. I don't think we made any wrong decisions this year. But there were incidences that were suspensionable. And I think there's some things that we should be doing on the proactive front to curb that. Melissa's going to say a bit more about some strategies and initiatives we have in place later on in the meeting tonight. But I think those are the three that are kind of on my mind to think about where we have the most kind of exposure or or risk of of not doing the good work best. Development is kind of listed as a as a not met here, but I I think it's it's properly been deprioritized for some of the other things that have taken up more of our time over the past couple of years. And it hasn't been as much a need. I do think that we're kind of in a place now we have to. Perhaps look to bring that back to support school. We'll say a bit more about that later on in the meeting. We had some. Some really nice ideas coming out of the last meeting, too. So that's the other area I kind of flag as a as a where we should and can get better. Okay, so that's a snapshot. I kind of like this format and then we can dig into individual data as we need to, but this is clear. As I, as I kind of look at at this from the, again, a balcony view.
Can I ask you a question, Josh, from the format?
Yeah.
Goes and doesn't go in here. Like, for example, there's no. Test performance or anything data.
Yeah, it's not an academic dashboard.
How we put it together and what what we decided would be tracked here versus somewhere else.
Yeah, so let's think back to the beginning here. This was something that Sarah. Only kind of like brought to us, you know, six, seven years ago and said, hey, here's a, here's a sample of what I've seen other schools do in terms of what might be. Regularly updated to to boards around areas of of. School health and main areas of school. And then in addition to that, we often report out on. Measures that are academic and. Some of them are interim, kind of in nature, whether it's sort of STAR or interim assessments or state exams. There are other indicators that we do use internally and have used at the school that we don't kind of bring to this board and perhaps. We haven't brought to SLC in the same way to that would be valuable. And so that might be, you know, measures around kind of observations. And the degree which progress is being made in classes around specific strategies being used that are promising towards student learning. And so things like that could enter into kind of an academic or teaching and learning dashboard. Is that what you're sort of thinking about or suggesting here, Maron?
Yeah, I'm I'm not, you know, obviously, that's not my background, so I I don't know what the metric should be, but. It's odd to me if this is meant to be at least somewhat all encompassing that we don't have. Student. Performance.
Yeah.
Measures in here, you know, which arguably are more important than. You know, a a good half of the things on here, if not all of them.
Yeah. So I think, yeah, again, when when we put this together with Sarah a few years ago, there was sort of like, hey. Here's like the monthly data dashboard for general things of school. And then here's the sort of testing schedule and what's being provided during those times, which mainly dealt with interim assessments. But what comes to mind for me. Is I think Juliana might have some good ideas here for what is being used in common that perhaps we could borrow and steal and make better. She has mentioned in the past the importance of using leading indicators to sort of think about how things are moving and going. So. I think that'd be kind of a clear next step for us is to get something from her and maybe doing that offline so that we have something that maybe we begin to build out.
And I wonder if there's anything we need to think about adding with respect to the building. No, no, we aren't it.
With what, sorry?
The building.
Yeah, what aspect are you thinking about?
Right, I'm just raising it. I'm sort of, how do we track how that's going? Like, are we generally? On on budget and we can talk about that later in.
Yeah.
A session.
Yep.
You know, are we keeping up with all the workload that that's created? Are we?
Yeah, there's there's definitely a a I I could see. You know, it wouldn't take the same forms as this, but it could be like a a general work plan or like a a score, a scorecard for like what we're doing annually with regard to kind of like. The the building and it might have.
Yeah, what I mean, you you guys can think about it and Jim again would have a better sense than I, but I think. Those enough little things that have started to pop up that I think we need a comprehensive understanding of what's going on there.
Yep.
No, I I couldn't agree more. I think we need a slide. That addresses the bond covenants. In every meeting, make sure we're meeting those covenants. And now we have, you know. This, whatever we call renovation plan, capex plan, whatever the funds provide for that, how is that progressing? Two slides, we definitely need to do that. And I, I second what Maron said, I mean. Look, I would put. How are the kids doing? You know, testing wise. I would have several slides on that before I got to. You know, that compliance, not that that doesn't matter, but that, I mean, come on, that's why we're in this thing is. How the kids are progressing. So I think you need to. Think of a an elegant way to present in a couple of slides, you know, how we're doing on those metrics. Now, we're in summer, so I get it, you know, there's.
No, but this is the time to think about these things. Let me ask a, let me ask a question that kind of may advance thinking here. So. Right now, the way in which we are set up. Things are brought to the SLC related teaching and learning, things are brought to DFC with regard to facility facilities and development. I I would think that maybe those sort of dashboards live within those committees and then there's a trigger. Committee members say we should bring this to the full board. And we do. Otherwise, this is meant to be kind of a general dashboard and it could be tweaked what we're looking at now to maybe encompass a couple of things or lose out on a couple of things that maybe aren't as important.
Okay. Well, on the bond covenants, maybe that's something at the committee level, but certainly on the performance in the classroom and how we're doing. On the SED thing, I would beef that up a lot.
Yeah.
But yes, things like the bomb covenants and how we're moving forward on the renovations.
A line in the general board meeting saying compliance with covenants, yes or no, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You can go in more detail in the AFC, for example.
Yeah. Yeah, for, you know, see. Cool, these are, this is good. I think this this improves. Information share in dialogue. So. I'm cool. I want to act on a couple of things, but what I've got here is I've got kind of academic dashboard, perhaps for SLC, but perhaps. Incorporating some sort of system where that's reported out to board at the same level, too. And then kind of facility dashboard, perhaps at the DFC level with. The 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 slide and the information addressing board covenants. And then we can choose kind of what should go to the full board in a given month during those committee meetings prior to the board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, just for me, I'll speak personally, where how they're doing the classroom is where the rubber hits the road. Everything I'm seeing here should feed into that, but that's where we know. Whether attendance matters, whether, you know, you know, so that's that's kind of the end all be all. So we got to. Really hone in on that.
Yeah. Melissa, any insights or questions for for team with with someone that's been put forward idealized?
I I I think, oh, there it goes. I I agree. I think that is exactly why we're here. So having some of those dashboard level metrics for how students are doing makes a ton of sense.
Well, good stuff. Dashboard check, let's kind of move into next area, which is a bit of strategic planning work. So what I what I want to do, I brought this to the SLC on Wednesday. The proposal was to bring this forward. Perhaps in a an abbreviated form to the full board. So there's a full understanding of. What this sort of playbook incorporates within school. Which is essentially just direction. It's just clarity for for our organization and and answer some very key questions on. What we do, who does what, how we behave in the work and what we're aiming for essentially. So. My team, my sort of senior team spent some time with this this spring developing something and then. We shared it out with the full staff today to, I think, a a fairly welcoming audience. So. Let me share a couple of the highlights from that with you. This is meant to be general, this applies to any old institution or organization, so it's not just school based. So whether you're a teacher, principal. An entrepreneur, a lawyer. A developer. If you're working with a team or an organization, some of it's I think holds. So your your insights here could be valuable in how we take it and make it especially effective. So. Let's kind of move into this and have some dialogue as we see fit. So as I said, we did a step back and said, hey, who are we as a school right now? We're moving into decade two. What are some things that organizationally would make us? Cleaner, sharper, better, more effective, healthier. And so that was some of the thinking that we did. We use some text to kind of make some decisions about how to. How to organize our thoughts and our delivery of this thinking. And so with that. We created what is our playbook, which answers some very core questions about the school, such as why we exist. How we behave, what behaviors, what actions do we take and expect the team in doing the work? Well. What do we do? Just general sense like what what's what do we do as as a school? Why are we here? And then how do we succeed and what's most important right now if we're deliver on one thing? That one thing for us is. Strong and consistent growth for all. So that goes back to what we've just discussed around having perhaps some some better, stronger, sharper metrics around academics at the school to get a sense of. To what degree are we growing over the course of the year in as real time as we can get? So I think we're on the same page around those things. Couple of notes here. With the why we exist. It's very similar to our mission and what we've always said in the past. I think the one inclusion here is that we have been more explicit about college prep and being a college prep school. And the reason for that is we're now cohorts in, we're now four cohorts in to having alumni who are experiencing college, a vast majority of our kids are in college. And we've got some data about what we're doing well and perhaps less well. And so making sure that our full team. A sixth grade science teacher, a tenth grade PE teacher, an eleventh grade history teacher, all in line around, okay. We are working toward each and every one of our kids, having all doors open to them and being ready to college, ready for college, skills wise. Habits wise, character wise, exposure wise, and that kind of driving our actions over the course of a kid's ten years at our school. So. That's the big picture. And so I think today went fairly well in our orientation of this to team. We spent a good ninety minutes this morning. Talking about this. We even went into behaviors like, okay. A commitment of our school is that we are a team. And so what are some behaviors that then reflect we are a team? And then we went into some behaviors that might be counter to that. And so. That dialogue, we haven't done as much at the beginning of the year and with the full school six twelve. And so I think just organizationally. It represented us growing up a little bit, to be honest. So. That's a, that's a sense of kind of what we've done with this and what this represents. Let me pause and see whether others have. Any insights based on their experiences with this sort of thing in there.
Yeah, I I'll just, I'll just say this, the key with any organization, these are. Look at your key design element. They all sound great. How do you measure? And that's the hard part is how do I measure excellent teaching? More time for learning, I can measure that. It's pretty easy. You know, the enrichment, how do I measure? You've got to measure everything. That's where the KPIs and all that sort of stuff come in. How do I measure whether? We are providing a college preparatory curriculum and that comes into the SLC sort of style.
Yeah.
And so really, this is all nice and you see a lot of these. It's harder when you get down to measuring success or failure. Because that's the tough part and. And and holding people to those. You know, measurements, standards that you've agreed to. We're failing on excellent teaching. Here's why. We agreed to these. You know, this is how we decided that we were going to measure for excellent teachers and we're failing.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the kind of the next step is. This is all nice, it all looks great, it's pretty. How do you measure and what do you do when things aren't going right? That's the hard part.
In in thinking about that, Jim, I think there is significant room for growth here. And I think here's where we sort of are now with that. And so if we just kind of jump back up here. If we think about one of the key design elements around kind of like kids having exposure and kids experiencing extracurriculars and experiencing a whole child education. One of the ways in which we measure that is through student participation in extracurriculars. And so is it a perfect measure? No, it's kind of crude, but it gives us a sense of how many of our kids. Are doing extracurricular events after the school day and opting into that.
That's a hard one, though, because nobody on your staff feels responsible for that metric. Right? And they're not held accountable for that metric. So it's a hard one. It's that's that's a, that's kind of weird.
But clarification there would be that we do have the the athletic directors are squarely responsible for this metric being met.
So if it's not met. What happens?
Depending on the reason, what happens varies.
I mean, that's, that's the, that one's hard. The classroom, excellent teaching is one. That's a hard one, too.
Yeah.
But how do does that teacher in the classroom? Who's been tasked with a key design element of excellent teaching, do they know? What that looks like.
Yeah.
Really, and what it doesn't, you know, and.
I'll throw off, I'll just give you a sense of what we what we what we are attempting to do now. Melissa can kind of chime in and sharpen it, but you know, if we take. If we take seventh grade ELA or eighth grade ELA, right? What we want in middle school is for students by the time they graduate. From eighth grade to be reading on reading level. As of eighth grade, so they're ready for high school. And we've got some pretty solid ways in which we assess reading levels to determine whether a student's high school reading level or not. Ready, given the reading skills or not. And so that's one thing we use, we use STAR. And we know when we've hit that and when we haven't. Unfortunately, we had a tough year in which the growth measures that we established with our teams weren't met, but on one occasion. And that was in seventh grade ELA, I believe. So we do have some ways in which that is assessed. We do communicate that with teams. And then, you know, depending on the actions, we try to take actions that correct it as soon as possible. And again, there are ways in which we improve that, but those are the ways in which we're doing it now. In ELA also, we have state exam results, right? And so we want kids to show proficiency, grade level proficiency by eighth grade. In order to do that, they've got to make growth. From sixth to seventh to eighth grade if they're coming in behind, which a vast majority of our students do. So. You know, those are some of the measures that we do use. Are they perfect? And are there perhaps better leading indicators we can use? That's where my head goes as I think.
Yeah, no, it's hard, it's hard. I mean, the easiest one, like from the corporate world is the salesperson. You know, you get paid a ten percent commission, you eat where you kill. And I know very, very, very clearly whether that person succeeded or not, you know. That's that's way over here. You're you're in a totally different land over here, but. But what gets measured gets done. And so if people understand, here are the metrics. And so if people understand, here are the metrics. Behind excellent teaching, behind, you know, these various things that sound great. I think they get done. But you know, it's different. I get it. It's different. I mean, it's very, very hard and every kid's different. And but I would encourage you to sort of. Push that a bit and to define what these things actually mean in a measurable sense.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I agree with Jim and I think it's sort of, this is the first step and the kind of overall framework. And then you have to kind of think about implementation and what it means. For what does it mean for performance reviews? What does it mean? For comp, right? Like, because you've got to be consistent, right? If this is your messaging, that's what's, that's what people have got to hear about. When they get reviewed and that's what people are going to hear about when they get hired. And it's what. You know, and, and it's got to tie to all the other things that you care about. And so I think you need to go down and sort of. Precision and, and, and practicality and see, okay, like, what are the metrics I'm using for this and this and not? And. Who owns them? Sort of like, like, you know, the KPIs and like any business. And, and, and how. How does their success sort of get measured against all this? And that means I think you just. I think we're going to have to be in some cases probably. More concrete in how we measure stuff. May not be easy even.
No, I, I, a hundred percent. I, I like this conversation. Melissa, where's your head go?
In agreement. And I, I think that there, there are a couple of moves we're making this year. I'll speak to them more in depth when we come up, but something like. Great teaching was a wonderful one to dig into because there's a few things that were quantifying. And we're just sophisticated this year. So Josh walked through how student performance metrics would speak to great teaching. Though we know there are a lot of factors in that, right? Attendance could be a factor in that. We also moved to a new framework, a development framework. That is for, that does quantify teacher performance. We've had one, but we created it internally, which meant there was a lot of like physician heal thyself. And so we have a new one that is widely used and widely accepted. We could bring in outside stakeholders to look at that. And that quantifies across four levels, how teachers do on. Really a dizzying number of distinct. Performance elements, I, I think over 70. So we've also picked out the top ones. But there are ways in, in our annual reviews, in our conversations and in our coaching. Each week to talk about getting better in the classroom. So we're looking at how to quantify these things. And I think like the lingering questions are. How much should accumulated performance be weighted versus say one single observation? What is the correct balance in these conversations when we're talking about excellent teaching of actual student results or in progress? Student results and some of these quantified observational elements of practice. So we are, we're, we are quantifying these things more. We are applying accepted language to these things more. And it's just ironing out details at this point.
And seeing what works for you, right? Cause you might find that like some metric that it doesn't feel right. It's like spitting out. A result that says this person isn't good when, you know, any, anything you. Tells you otherwise or vice versa. So I think you just got to kind of customize and do it obviously, but it's going to be a feedback loop a little bit to see what exactly you're.
Precisely. And I think that's how we landed on some of the changes is that. Some of the conclusions didn't square with our observations of reality. So just getting like very clear, visible language was, was important.
So the, the, the last question that is prompted with this kind of exercise is sort of the, the who does what? And I think we talked about this in the spring in an extended way, but we also shared that with team today. Like, so as we think about a model in which we have solo principals at each site. Melissa's formally moving into a role as chief academic and schools officer. And I'm kind of working in my role as head of school, but more of an ED sort of. Position with those sorts of responsibilities. Sharing this with team is important. So they're aware of like exactly how our structures work and what the responsibilities of each team member is. And so we did share it out today. And I think it was, it was helpful. It was illuminating. So. From this, and again, this was a first for us. We haven't done this sort of like big full school six, 12, like visioning kind of experience. And so I think from it, there should be more clarity across some of these big questions. And I think again, as an example. In the past, we have not been explicit about being a college prep school. And so. In not being explicit about that, people are able to come to their own conclusions about who we are and what we are. And if those conclusions don't meet the standard of kids being truly prepared for college, that's detrimental to what we're trying to do. And so specifying that explicitly, I think was helpful today. So the work for us organizationally is just not just kind of like doing a, a cute piece of paper and passing it out and talking about it for an hour. But also like over communicating it and reinforcing it over the year, both in our, our sort of communication and practices as well as. Our systems. So, you know, we share this with you because as board members, you should kind of be aware of like some of this kind of big dialogue, both. So that we're on the same page as to where we're going. None of this is out of line with our charter or any of that. It's in fact, very much in line. But you know, from time to time, you guys are asked questions about, hey, what's the school about? And this gives you a sense of what's it about, whether that's informal or formal.
Everybody, do you have sort of? But I, I don't know who designed this and who started being exposed to it now, but whose buy-in do you have already? And I know it's not very different from what you've always said, but sort of like who? Who, who, who create, who created this and, and who's sort of?
Yeah. So I mean, look, I'm not, I'm not, we're not, we're not just kind of like riffing off of, hey, this would be a good idea. I'm actually, we're using a text. Which is, you know, very much regimented and practical on kind of how you create a very healthy organization. And the first key lever is having a cohesive, strong leadership team. And so back in June, Melissa, myself and Andrea and Grace were getting together and having it out about kind of what, what we stand for as a school. And so I feel more confident than ever, twice as confident as ever. In terms of like us being open and clear and committed to a common cause reflected in the responses to these questions. So that process was good, takes time, which, you know, always feels a bit stressful, but we're there. And now it's about, given that we are kind of key people and leaders within the organization, us getting the word out to others so that they are inspired and follow suit.
And, and you guys are all. Fine with the response, and you particularly, I guess. You, you're good with the stuff you're giving up and excited with the mandate you're keeping or is, is there?
A hundred percent. We want to be successful as a school and that often does require some compromise and some simplicity and focus. And so I think where there has been giving up of things, it's for the greater good.
Thank you.
Yeah, you couldn't be more right. I mean, the leadership team is. Number one, that's where you start. If you have one bad apple on that team, you're toast.
Quiet apples who may not.
Yeah, we don't feel like they're a part of the leadership team. They kind of have a title, but they're not really part of the strategy making, you know, you're toast. You're done. So yeah, I couldn't agree more. I, I just say, you know, again. We say myself, but every startup you walk into has a version of this playbook poster on their wall. And every employee walks by it every day and they just don't even, you know. Measure, measure, measure. If this is important, measure it. This is critical. We got it. It's not just some. Some poster in the classroom.
Some of the other steps here that, you know, I think. Get us at a place of over communicating some of these answers and that clarity and the visual is, you know, on the list. So we do have to have that versus not, but you're right, that by itself, it gets very little done and can be.
Everybody walks by it when they come in, they grab their coffee, they walk right by it. Measure it.
In addition to that, I think they're like building in kind of like. My, like building in moments where like these key pillars of our school are lifted. And brought to people's attention and celebrated, like which, which educator just did the thing that we aspire to and let's celebrate the heck out of them. And then the other thing would be engaging. It's a gauging kind of our ability for our team to be able to state. Some of the components of this playbook, why we exist or what we do or what's most important right now. And I mean, I, I don't think that, that. This happens outside of education, but one of the things that we do is we borrow from the classroom often. And even after today's session, there was what we call an exit ticket, which is a check for understanding. And there are four or five questions that ask people, hey. What did you think about this or what was this about? And it's meant to kind of gauge what people took away from the session. And then for us, that's data. It's clean data on the degree to which people internalize or begin to internalize some of these things so that we're all rowing in the same motion. So. We got to do that more than just after the first session. And so that's about discipline and, and forward thinking. So that gives you a sense, this, I, I appreciate the discussion throughout. It's been kind of live, so I want to move us, move us forward now. Marion, to your point. Much of what's here, that one pager is very much in line with some of the things that came out from our renewal visit and. Feedback we received from the state. So. As you look at this, maybe, maybe again, you'll note that some of these items show up on that dashboard that we look at. Some of them do not. In the event that they do not, we should think about some expansions such that we're measuring the right things. And so even something like teacher certification. I don't know if we need like a monthly report out of where we are, but we should have some periodic report out. Maybe it's twice a year of where we are. In the same way that we do that with sped compliance, where I come to you three times a year and say. Here, the percentage of students who have IEPs that are up to date. That are fully being serviced or partially because of changes or our services versus what's on an IEP. So there's some, there's some thinking and some kind of.
I, I think you also probably. Can change frequency, right? But something that the authorizer has pointed out as a shortcoming, we need to hear like often. Until it's fixed.
Hundred percent. I need to see that and, and see through. Okay, so I, this feels, it feels comprehensive. It feels clear in terms of our approach right now. And we're beginning to kind of zoom into the implementation side of things. Now, so we're going to move into committee reports. And it was great to have Juliana last week on the call. And she kind of brings. Some, some new insights into this SLC work. She can't make it today, but I think that was maybe one, one new. Detail coming out of the experience. And Melissa, I'll kind of leave it to you. We've done some of this stuff already and talking about headlines and the playbook, what's in green? Which really covers our strategy and that question within the playbook on strategy is what Melissa kind of brought to that SLC and then brought to school today. So Melissa's going to do a quick kind of overview of, of some of the big shifts we're taking and the reasons why. Now, so Melissa, I'll hand things over to you.
Yeah, thank you. So we, in addition to just clarifying who we are as a school. And, and what we're doing here, talked about some of the shifts. And some of these shifts are really double clicking things that we've started and done a poor job of maintaining. And we need to intensify, clarify and commit to. And these are around curriculum, instruction and culture and climate in our schools.
And even before you go through that, Melissa, I think with the brief recap on academic data, we did deep dive as a board last month. And so we're not going to bring that to you again today, but I think what was good, and as I step back, I like that we're, we're. Communicating the same things to the board that we're bringing to school in rather near time. And so Melissa did a really great job today of starting out with some of the, some of the high points of year and where there's been some good progress. And accomplishment. And then moved into very frank talk about where we.
What was the reaction?
Melissa, you were on stage. What do you say? I can kind of chime in, but I think.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, I think it was hard for folks to hear. And I said, this is going to be hard for us to hear. And it's hard for us to confront, but we can't. Hide this. So I, I think it was, it was challenging. And when I asked folks to kind of zoom out and process, we talked about the good stuff too. You could hear folks really zeroing in on, on elements that they. That resonated with them and within, within their practice. So. And I know our schools are going to do.
Say something like and have a bullet on the, on the screen which says. Our students who received interventions for literacy showed no growth that was different than a student who did not. Like, that's hard. Like, so it's saying there was no impact there, like people devoting time supposedly to then. Helping kids who needed most with their reading skills like that, that sucks. And, and so we were pretty explicit about that today.
Because the interventions are useless or is that because of something else? The people doing the interventions.
That's a, that's a separate deep dive which we can go into.
I thought of who, it's a what and it's related to my next point around curriculum.
Yeah. So let's kind of go there, Melissa, in, in certainly in like less depth than we did in last week. You and Juliana nerdy about the curriculum for too long. It was fun to see you guys go back and forth, but I want to be where people's time today. So curriculum wise, what would you want to say?
So scroll down to Josh. So the first thing I'd want to say is that the biggest research-based. Point of agreement among most educational experts is that challenging curriculum delivered on grade level to kids. Is the, the number one thing that will move kids. And so we're really doubling down on curriculum this year. Something the board should know, because we look at data very closely, is that we are looking at shifts. Across time in our assessments over the next couple of years. So we're going to see these exams move and some are going on to computer base. So two things are telling us what to do with curriculum right now. One is that when we know that we're moving to next gen standards or a different kind of exam. We're, we're going to move on that curriculum. So algebra one. We identified for curriculum updates in the spring, even though the, the data we had said that that was our strongest subject. The data this year did not bear that out at both sites, but we knew that we were going to move to a new curriculum there. Our actual performance is the other thing that will, will tell us when we have to move on curriculum. So for example, that living environment course is becoming biology statewide. We were unsatisfied with our scores. So even though. We have another year before that exam shifts, we are doubling down on that one here. And then our ELA and math curriculums at the middle school have both shifted, but are moving online. So it is also the right time to move those. Uh, so we've identified some really strong external curriculums. Josh, you can go down one more slide. That ELA six, eight will move towards wit and wisdom. This is a curriculum that prioritizes full-length texts on grade level. Rich text for kids, discussion includes plans for Socratic seminars within each unit. Or module as they call them, because sometimes kids are reading multiple texts. And then also prioritizes writing, essay writing, six, eight. So kids are getting more at bats with stronger college-ready curriculum. Eureka math is a strong curriculum. It is very aligned to New York State standards. So we've identified that one, though we're looking at illustrative math, which is where the city is going. And does some, really prioritizes depth of knowledge over breadth. And that's where assessments are going to. So that'll be important. And I talked about biology needing an update there. We're looking at the things that have worked within our ELA 11 curriculum to rework that in 10. And AP language, same thing. AP Lit has been successful. We're using, we're using the same teacher. The same teacher will be teaching both and following that same flow. Pending shifts, we said, what, what was the issue in intervention? I was not at the middle school last year, but the assessment of Andrea, our principal, is that we did not have strong enough curriculum. So years ago, we have a curriculum that we know has been largely. Identified as one that, that isn't making huge shifts for kids, but we had something. And last year, folks were patching things together. So we're looking for the right literacy intervention curriculum. We have a favorite, but it's expensive. So I'm meeting with them tomorrow to see what possibilities exist. And then down one more. Um, and then down one more. Uh, John, thirty-two. The other thing I'd say on this um, is like a pre-mortem, thinking about where this could go wrong. Um, we need to develop teachers in these curriculums. It's not enough to just hand a curriculum to folks and expect that we get great teaching out of that. So this is going to take some investment in, in time um, and expertise. Um, if we can't use outside experts. And then uh, we've got a lot of newer to unity teachers in some of these key subject areas. So making sure that um. They're ready. In some ways, that's the exact right person to receive a new curriculum because it's normal to them in this setting. Uh, but that is one thing I'm chewing on is the vast number of folks who are uh, either new to their subject or new to their. Uh, to Unity will be teaching.
Now, uh, how do you train people in the new curriculum? Where, where does the time come from? And what, what exactly do they do? And do you, what's the plan there?
So many of these curriculums do come with um. With P Ds where they will send experts into the building and sit with teachers and, and bring them through them. Those are expensive. So when we can't always do those, we have sent our chairs to virtual P Ds, so they're learning up on those. And our chairs are becoming experts and this will be part of teachers' weekly coaching cycle. So. Um, it might be in the past, a teacher might have had to design a, a, a lesson plan from scratch. This one will exist and the teacher instead will adapt it. That time saved from designing a lesson might be spent, say, rehearsing the lesson. Before going live with it, instead of kind of opening up that Google document and typing everything in. Um, so those are some of the ways that we're investing time in.
And you're. The, sorry, with, with the, the number of curricula you're changing. Sort of all at once and, and your, your internal resources to make that happen.
Yeah, um, because we're, we're changing the uh, biggest chunks. Um, at, in, in our, our middle school stems and E L A, and that allows for vertical alignment. So. Um, um, while we don't have, because we're such a small school, you know, when I started teaching at a district school in New York City a couple decades ago. Um, there were six of us teaching the same subject area. We didn't have strong curriculum, but we relied on each other. We rely on vertical teaming because there's not as many folks teaching the same content. So following the same flows, the same protocols allows um, you know, iron strengthening iron there. So moving all of those curriculum uh, together, uh, curricula together makes sense in those areas. And then we do still have. Subject area experts in our, they're either A Ps or department chairs that allow for that. Um. Uh, in some ways, one curriculum. Versus three curricula aligned are, are, are equally um, challenging. There's other areas where we've identified one. Our high school um. Doesn't share the same degree of similarity across grades as say, um, sixth grade math and seventh grade math. So we've identified Algebra One, and then we will add, uh, if this goes well, the same um, illustrative, we'll use them across years. And then biology as well, we would add, um, we would add up across time.
Okay, right. To the, to your point, Marianne, this is something we talked about on S L C. I do think there's just so much change right now. Not just on the curriculum, but also, you know, the leadership structure changes and. And other things. And so I, I think it's just something that. Folks really have to keep an eye on to see if something's really going off the tracks.
Yeah.
Because it, it's a lot and it's August twenty-second already.
Yeah, um, and I think that this, this is, is some of the wisdom in thinking about some of this restructuring. Is that my role affords the luxury of like being able to be on the ground um, in those curriculum. Moments, really observing, uh, analyzing and if necessary, coaching.
How much more does it cost to put a P D in the room for one of these?
We're spending.
Five to ten thousand dollars.
That five, so we're spending five thousand uh, to have someone come in and develop teachers on. On instruction or pedagogical model that Melissa's going to talk about momentarily and then it's happening.
Yeah, but, but you said we can't afford some of them. And what would it cost to go to me? Like, not only is it great to have a P D who understands the. What's being taught, but you guys can get a lot of feedback from that P D who's been to a hundred schools on how your. Your teachers do, right?
Yeah.
So maybe that's an opportunity to shift budget life items into that. Um, how do you think about that?
I think we've been doing a lot of shifting budget lines, especially because the curriculum themselves are expensive. They come with. That's inclusive of the resources for kids. Um, and there, there are a number of areas we're investing in. Um, so that is um. Some of the reality, though I think it's like a big wish list item for Andrea, for example, to um, to have. Uh, more support with this. And these are things that we can always add. Um, they're expensive. Professional development because it's not sort of someone coming and teaching a lesson. It's someone like sitting down for a full day with teachers. Um, it's observing classes, may uh, supporting and making shifts and things like that. So they, they are pretty intensive. And of course, there's the time element with that as well. Um, but we are availing ourselves of the vast amount of um, training that. Is afforded with some of these strong curriculums that include a curricula that include um. Um, like online virtual communities um, uh, that are really supportive.
I, well, you, you guys know better than I do, but having somebody in the room, I remember, like Josh, when we heard Josh. And he came in and sat down and, you know, gun the room. You learn so much from that.
Yeah, that was, that was Ken, you and Ken a few years ago.
Oh, Ken too. Ken, I mean, Ken took me into a room and in thirty seconds, he said, this is what's going wrong. Here's what's going right. And it was just so valuable. And uh, because he's done it with a lot of different, he's got so many insights. So. Yeah, yeah, you know, that's one that's in your bailiwick, but, but something to think about if you get. Uh, maybe these are not. You know, that type of person, but, but get people in the room who have seen this down a lot of different schools. And they can give you guys feedback on, on our educators and how they're doing.
Yeah, um, definitely a huge wish list item. Again, we, we did get training for our. Um, our curriculum leads at each site, so they are now turnkeying that initial, here's how we unpack this. Um, and start to plan with it elements for their teachers this summer. Um, but as far as um. Uh, real fidelity to the curriculum and, and course correcting, that's something that's available to us with these bigger external. Um. Uh, organizations that do really strong vetted work, um, and it feels very different than um, internally created only.
Uh, this feels like. Almost Capex, right? In a business sense, like this seems like. An investment, right? Like, like, if you're gonna do this, you gotta do it right. And if it means fundraising for it or getting money from F Y N B. Or whatever, like this seems like a place where. I mean, I, I wouldn't say go crazy, obviously, but where.
Yeah.
You know, that's not like a run rate budget thing, or at least maybe not all of it is. And it seems like if there's an initial. Investment, it, it'll pay dividends for years to come. So you, you know, it's probably worth. Thinking, and I don't know where this fits between A F C and S L C and everything else and. And, and D F C for where the money would come from, but I, maybe this, it's worth a bit of a deeper dive between now and the next meeting to figure out. What would be, you know, reasonable cost that would. That would help you take it to the next level.
That'd be uh, phenomenal. I would double click that reading intervention piece too, is being key for us both in the training. Um, and the, the resources, um, as uh, oftentimes we're, we're finding folks who are training into this role. As a reading interventionist.
Well, that's the problem. I mean, that's a huge issue because, look, I, you know, my limited experience, you set the bar high for a kid. They tend to out. They tend to go a little higher, you know, they tend to, but if they can't read, you're screwed, right?
Correct.
Uh, so that's, that's the foundational element there. Uh, they'll just be frustrated and they'll act out and, you know, so. Solving for that is critical because I like this. It feels like you're raising the bar and I probably, you know, kids will. Go higher if you challenge them. But if, if, if the reading part is not right, you're just going to increase frustrations for that.
Sure.
That, yeah.
And we were talking podcasts earlier, um, the Soul the Story podcast is a highly recommend. And it, it talks a lot about how we've had really a paradigm shift that brought us back closer to how probably most of us learned to read. Um, and that means that folks who have been working in uh, in anywhere in education, but especially in New York. Um, for the last ten, fifteen years, um, might um, need some refreshing and, and relearning here. So some of the curriculum lays out this thinking, um, but there's other times where we're teaching. Um, teachers to do this work is really important. So we'll see uh, the fruits of those first P Ds, um, what my E L A department chair at the middle school. Was in, until like seven at night on, on Friday, um, a wit and wisdom P D through great mind. Getting ready to, to work with her teachers. We have another one about like rostering and making sure the data is right with students coming up um, with them as well. And then the next one is around instruction. This speaks to some of the, I alluded to this a little bit before. Um, in the ways that we talk about and quantify teacher practice. Um, we are moving to a, a framework that's used outside of Unity. We were using our own. Um, we added some, it was just kind of one row. We added some always sometimes nevers, but the degree of precision. And the ease of updating it in a way that was meaningful as the, you know, as, as the world and our profession shifts. Uh, was clunky and challenging. So Josh, if you go right there.
Yeah.
Prioritizing a few of the domains, but you can see some of the clear ways that we might speak to teachers about their practice. So we've been talking about curriculum, um, planning coherent instruction is something that uh, we are going to dig into across both sites. When you go to the rubric level, they have everything from um. Um, uh, unsuccessful, which is basically like you're, you're having no to negative impact on children. To um. Do a, a fourth strong um, uh, level which says that. Uh, you've kind of got kids doing all of that work in the class because you've empowered them to do that. So there's very clear ways that we talk about all of these. Um, about our teaching elements here, uh, and like very clear um, uh, granular parts of practice.
Just to, just to add to what you've said, Melissa, and to maybe connect to our conversation broadly. Uh, we've been kind of creating this stuff, like a rubric, a taxonomy, what good teaching looks like. And devoting perhaps more of our time to the creation of it rather than into like the implementation of it. And so with just adopting this. Which is fully established, put together by experts and um, running with it and then devoting time to the delivery. Um, we're gonna be serving ourselves and kids more effectively. Jim, to your point, I mean. These elements of really good teaching across each of these domains. They're measurable. So you can get a sense of like the quality of teaching across different expertise or practices or skills. Give that feedback, um, evaluate. Um, so um, this is, i- it, it's a good move for us and a smart one now.
Um, this is the high level of the framework. When we look at the rubric, I think one of the things I really. Um, have been enjoying about it is that there is a basic and proficient level. Um, more or less, and the basic level honors a, a teacher who's really trying, but not. Um, succeeding at one of these elements. The other one is like, we're, we're seeing fruit from this. Um, and that I think is just so much clearer for teachers than um, the usually. Sometimes never language that we had before.
So who is this? So, so this goes to the teachers. What, what is this right here? What, what am I looking at?
So this is the, this is the high level of all of the domains um, for the framework for teaching here. Um, there is a deeper rubric. Uh, we are engaging in professional development with this. Every leader has already been. Um, trained by having an expert come in. We watched videos of teaching. Um, we talked about the teacher's practice. We talked about like. What we might zero in on to support a teacher uh, in improving. We talked about how to get teachers to self reflect on this and identify areas. That they're going to grow. Um, and then we will have them come in and work with our entire community next, or, or teaching community next week. Um, so this goes to the teachers at the high level, but then they also have the rubric. And the, the colors represent the, the um, Danielson. Heavily recommends prioritization because there are so many things on here, like each of these.
I was gonna say, if somebody, if I start a job, like my job descriptions. It's typically four bullets and that's it. Do that and you're good. There's a lot of bullet there and a lot of, like, if you hand this to somebody, do they understand precisely where their focus should be? Um. Or is this something else? Like, what, what do I make of this?
Jim, you have a coach here.
Yeah, you would have a coach. Um, and, and we all have more than four bullet points, unfortunately. I always said I, I like really want all of my jobs to fit on like a sticker um, that I can, can put up there and like know every single thing. Um, but this comes with a, a much longer document. Um, but the prioritization by a school, by school, these um, colorful items here are the things we'll be talking a, a lot. About a lot.
Okay, well, as long as they all get it. I mean, it, it just seems like a lot to me, but, but my, I'm getting old. Okay.
Um, I am as well. But um, for example, we're, we're, we welcome teachers back today. And in the next two days, we're going to be talking about the next thing I'll bring up, P B I S or our school cultural pieces. So supporting positive student behavior, for example, there, um, which was like that headline. There are all those bullets. And if I open up um, the actual rubric, it's going to have um, like. Tons more text and language about that. We're going to be unpacking that as a school. We're going to be talking about. Um, how we uh, make that climate exist in our school and then we're relating that language to it. So. Um, I think the challenge with uh, Danielson is going to be making it um. Simple. But it is comprehensive. So um, that's, that's my job. Uh, so, and then the last one is culture and climate. We all have been thinking about that third benchmark from NICE Ed. Um, we have a, a behavior system at school. Um, uh, P B I S is some positive behavior interventions and supports. Is the framework or the um. Ideology uh, that we use to talk about our school. And there are just some very clear elements of that framework. That we need to double down on. So we have a couple texts that we're using um, to um, uh. To refer to with regularity. Um, we, principals are creating or recreating their school-wide behavior plans. And we have P B I S teams at each site. That's a key element of uh, P B I S system. Uh, that we haven't really had, like even in being in the school for years before um. Engaging and learning about this a little bit more this summer, I always thought that was our leadership team. And this talks more about how multiple stakeholders are on that team and, and looking at data and holding um, their own school to account. For this um, this system that is so important, or this system of systems. So that's the other key focus.
So I think headlines here is that we're not recreating anything or moving on and adopting some new system of. Um, creating a really positive, safe, welcoming, pro-learning environment. We're simply doubling down on a system that we've used but haven't been fully successful in implementing. And that's because there've been some gaps in what we've tried to implement. And so we're going back to the books and saying, hey, how do you do this well? And then thinking about implementation and doing it well. And so that really is the work right now. So with those three items, curriculum shifts, instructional clarity and having a system that. Um, has been well-vetted that we're adopting and then having stronger implementation of. Um, our ways in which we implement really great. Climate and culture at the school. Um, those shifts should get us to a place of. Seeing through some of the goals we have for your school, including strong and consistent growth, which is what matters now. And so there's the deep dive for S L C. I appreciate you guys kind of engaging. I want to spend a couple of minutes just sharing out. Just some headlines from the other committee meetings um, this week. And just so from a. Audit and finance committee standpoint, there are three big headlines coming out of um, our work and meetings. First. Uh, we are continuing to kind of reconcile the twenty-two and twenty-three budget, our, and are in communication with our auditors and doing so. So that's in process. Um, with regard to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we're making adjustments there. Due to the purchase of five eighty-four Driggs, which went through um, just after our. Due to the purchase of five eighty-four Driggs, which went through um just after our last meeting. And um, so we 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 may bring an amended budget to the board in October, depending on a few factors that um. Uh, we are um adjusting, keeping a close eye on, that includes enrollment. And then finally, during that call, we did discuss one update that we're gonna bring the board for approval tonight, and that is the um. Uh, financial policies and procedures manual and one change there. I can describe that when we get into the approval items momentarily, um, but that'll be coming down the pipeline soon. I think that kind of covers. What what was discussed on Friday. Um, Jim and Marion, would you add anything?
No.
Nope.
Has there been any update on the, we discussed some of the variances between where the budget was shaking out versus what was presented to the bondholders?
I think we're saving that for later in the meeting.
Okay.
Um, and so then we move on to development and facilities. Um, and I think the updates are as follows. Um, Jim, myself and Sal met uh last Friday. And on the facilities front, um, here are the updates. Uh, our middle school is actually gonna be undergoing some rather significant renovation work over the next few years. Um, it may begin this year, it may not. Um, we haven't quite heard the starting point of that, but uh there will be. Um. An elevator placed in the building. Uh, there will be some movement of classes and administrative space. There will be upgrades to bathrooms uh in some of the mechanics there. So um, just know that's in the mix, just as NY. Um, that we will have to prepare for, um, but that's also something that the DOE is responsible for. So it's very different than. Our ventures with um five eighty-four Driggs. At five eighty-four Driggs, a purchase was completed on July thirty-first, and so it happened uh after about eight months of of um. Of prep work. So thank you, team, for for um the support along the way. And so now the work becomes, all right, it's our home. Uh, I think we have a deed now and now it's about how we make it uh the best home possible for kids and do so in the most responsible way. So that's where things stand. Um, we uh are now moving to devising a more detailed plan. For making repairs to the building. And so that's uh something which will be um a priority in the coming month. On the development front, um, uh, we did discuss some potential fundraising initiatives coming out of our meeting in July. Uh, and so there were three kind of ideas that come to mind for me coming out of that meeting in July. Um, one being uh just some small campaign work. These aren't any sort of order and probably not priority order. Uh, but some small campaigns over the course of the year to finance some of the school programs we have. Um, something like debate comes up where there's been some really good traction um as a program, as a fledgling program. But we do need funding to kind of make that happen in full form. So um, doing some things like that around select programs, I think is of interest and very feasible and doable. Second, a capital campaign for upgrades to five eighty-four Driggs. We own the building now. There's a good story to it in trying to make it now our home. So um, that being in the mix, um, specific considerations there. One being kind of naming rights and and kind of the utilization of that. There is some potential there, um, although it's not something that we've done. Um, outside of a couple of classrooms at the high school. So I think this would be bigger scale. It might require some some guidance uh externally. And then I think there's just a conversation to be had at some point about whether it's possible and um. Uh, warranted to bring on some 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 staff to make this happen, um, perhaps a part-time job or a consultant. Um, in in helping us with doing development well. Um, so those were things discussed um lightly during the August. DFC meeting. Um, a third item here would be. Um, and this would be more of a twenty-four, twenty-five item, but thinking about kind of how we do tutoring well. And this came out of our July meeting where Melissa's response to, I think Marion's question was, if every kid had a tutor. Um, uh, kids were better off. And so obviously, that's a tall order, but requires some thinking and and is something we should explore. Uh, with with a reality. Um, and so this will take some time, but I think it makes the list of 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 next steps and ongoing steps. Um, there is a grant with SED that we're going to be applying for called the Stronger Connections Grant. Um, it may be significant. Um, I think we're looking at perhaps, depending on our initiatives put forth. Um, a few hundred thousand dollars in funding. Um, and uh, we'll see how competitive it is, but it's due on September first. So uh, Michelle and myself are doing some work there, um, in leaning on other folks to help us in in crafting. A compelling application. And then finally, uh, we did receive a charitable donation for fifty thousand dollars in August uh that went to F O and B. Um, and that was from someone who's given to the school before. So those are updates. Uh, Jim or Sal, would you add anything to uh? This update uh for the general board?
None here, no, no.
All right, cool. So this is the before. As I look at this now, um, the before is And there's the after. This is a rendering that we created some years ago when we first moved in, but that's the, that's the most recent rendering we have of what the building could be. Without um perhaps some other key parts, but uh you get a sense of of where we might be going with with a a potential. Campaign to help us renovate and repair the building. Um, and so. We move things forward. Uh, ECPC, we decided not to meet just because of other uh commitments. Um, and so we're gonna meet on September fifth instead of last week. And I think that rounds out um the updates coming from committee meetings. So um, back to you, Jim.
Yeah, do we have the approval? We need to approve.
Oh, shoot. Oh, my gosh, there was one oversight. Well, there's a hard copy of agenda which does have.
Um, okay, so I think the only item was the prior minutes.
Yeah, minutes. So then there's also the FPP update, the policies manual, and I can I can provide a a rationale and the proposal there. But why don't we start with minutes from the July twenty-seventh meeting?
Okay, so item up for approval is the minutes from the prior meeting. Anybody have any questions, comments? Being none, let's turn our videos on, all in favor. Thank you. Okay.
And then the other, the other element, I'm gonna go back to the AFC. Um, slides. So the proposal here is to make one change to our FPP. And that is to allow principals to approve purchases of up to five hundred dollars. As of now, principals cannot approve purchases. They have to go to Chris or myself to do so. Rationale here, um, it's just that, you know, right now, our our principals are key people in the building and make major decisions um at the school. Um, yet aren't able to kind of to kind of make decisions about modest spending needs. Um, and so I think what that's created is um times in which uh perhaps a modest need. Um, is slowed down or efficient or time consuming on Chris or my part to kind of make happen. And uh, so we wanna clean that up and we think this is one way of doing so um at the at the school level. So that's the change right now. Approvals for purchases um are either the board, myself or Chris. This would add um principals to the mix of up to five hundred dollars.
I think the only thing I'd say is for you and Chris too. You can approve up to five hundred if you're under budget on that line item. And you're not projected to go over budget with that five hundred dollar approval. That's the only way you can approve five hundred. You guys stay under budget. I think we need to get that in place, getting some of the issues we're kind of working through with, putting things out of the budget. So I think, yes, th- this is fine. But it's gotta be within budget and within the projected budget for the rest of the year.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's the the the, that that is the practice that is underlying this here.
Okay, okay. Okay, good. And who's the gatekeeper on that?
Um, we will be, well, i- i- it it's Chris and Kristen. Um, and so checking in that, like they make purchases once they're approvals. And so we do have and will have four budget lines. Approved sub-budgets, and so they'll have a sense of when there may be something that isn't on that pre-approved sub-budget. Um, being spent on.
Got it, okay. Anybody else have any questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Right. I think we're done.
Two more, just um formalities on the deck.
Okay, anybody from the public?
I don't believe so. And then in thinking about uh the next meeting, uh, it's on September nineteenth, um, seven o'clock. Uh, some things on the agenda I imagine coming up are, uh, we may have middle school state exam results at that time. And so an analysis of that could be put forward. Um, the state has said that they're not gonna be releasing results as soon as they have in the past. So um, some unknown there, but that could be on the agenda, I imagine, as circling back to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Um, I'd like to bring forward, this comes out of our conversation about dashboards and things. Um, I think that would be added to the mix based on our conversation tonight, but there are a couple of areas that I do wanna zoom in on from a corrected lens. Um, and put forth some plans so that we're kind of held to um account in making um some progress in select areas. That are most crucial to make kind uh improvements in. So I wanna bring that to board. Um, and then just a note for team. Um, we had said when we created the schedule for this year, board meeting wise, that October seventeenth would be. A meeting at five eighty-four Driggs in person. So um, mark your calendars, they're in your calendars, but just mark them to be in Williamsburg. And that's all that I have unless others have other things that they would want to add to the mix based on our discussion tonight.